I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 21st, 2020 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance? Good flag. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And the current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have no presentations tonight, just a real quick comment, just because we televise this, people are looking. This is the first week we've got everybody back up at the dais with all eight council members and staff. So if people can't see what's going on, it might look like we're crowding a little bit, but we did install dividers between everybody. So we've got our COVID protections in place. On the public side, we've got the middle of every pew blocked off to force a little bit of separation. And any staff that is required to be in the meeting, we have in a separate room. So they'll come out and speak at the public here at the podium if they're needed. So trying to take the right precautions for the old building we've got. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. The contractor has begun applying the protective ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface called U-BASS on a portion of the city streets in accordance with the city's pavement improvement plan. Lay down of the U-BASS material has started on Fillmore Street. And I would encourage each of you to go drive down Fillmore if you haven't had a chance yet and check it out. Mayor Black, Phil and I met with most of you to discuss the city's budget for next year. We will be finishing up this week and getting a draft budget ready for introduction at the August 4th council meeting. And as we discussed with each of you during those individual meetings, there will be a separate budget hearing published for this year and in future years to comply with the new legislation requirements. And for this year, the separate budget hearing will be on August 18th at 8:00 PM following the regular city council meeting. And finally, there will be a budget, or excuse me, a public safety committee meeting on August 4th. And the meeting will be held at the Landing to allow for social distancing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Glover, I missed your vote. Seven yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. And on the consent were two appointments to mayoral appointments. I want to thank Mr. Rebick for agreeing to be on the Planning Commission again. And then a new member of the Library Board is Doug Rogers. So thank you very much for being willing to serve. Item E2, Ordinance 1887, an ordinance to ratify all ordinances approved during council meetings held remotely pursuant to Executive Order Number 20-03, signed by Governor Ricketts on March 17th, 2020. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R20-0084, this is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described. Hold on one second. I got out of order, I apologize. Item E1, Ordinance 1879, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from RE, Rural Residential Estates, to LI, PUD2, Limited Industrial Specific Planned Unit Development for Lot 1, and LI, Limited Industrial for Lot 2, for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southwest quarter, Section 25 Township 14 North, Range 11 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner of Highway 370 and Highway 50. The applicant is Ryan Companies, US Inc., Project Willa. This is an item that had been continued. We've already opened the public hearing back on June 2nd, and then we continued it indefinitely. It's back on the agenda. And so this is just a continuation of the meeting that was opened. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. We already took care of Item E2, so if there's no objections, I think I amended the agenda. But if nobody objects, we'll continue on. Seeing no objection. Item F1, Resolution R20-0084, public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southwest quarter of Section 25 Township 14 North, Range 11 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner of Highway 50 and 370. The applicant is Ryan Companies, Inc., Willa. And again, this was continued from the June 2nd. The public hearing was already open. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R20-0084? Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F2, Resolution R20-0109, a public hearing and a vote. A request for approval of a special use permit to authorize the construction of a principal structure within the downtown overlay district pursuant to Section 205-118A1 and parking facility pursuant to Section 205-118A6 to add an additional dwelling unit with a garage and associated parking to expand the multifamily residential use established on the property legally described as the north two-thirds of Lot 7 and all of Lot 8, Block 12 Papillion, generally located at 243 North Jefferson Street. The applicant is Mark Jatzik, 243 North Jefferson. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Do we have any opponents? Anybody could go ahead and come up to the podium and state your name for the record. And on public hearings, we generally allow five minutes. So if you'd state your name for the record.
My name is Jack Meford. I live at 244 East Third Street, right down here. And I guess I've got a few questions on this thing. We're building a 46 by 40 garage attached to 1,500 square foot apartment. And the plans here show that he's going to have parking on the east side of the building. And if you look at them plans, I don't know if you have them or not, but nobody is going to be able to get around that corner to get on that parking without backing straight out into the street across the grass. And this building is going to have, supposed to have nine-foot-high gutters, soffits, on the residential part and 12-foot on the garage, okay? Well, we shot that land yesterday. And in order for that to be high enough for any fall, sewage, or anything else, the back of that apartment is going to have to be three and a half feet out of the ground. So that's going to put that gutter up at 12 feet and then halfway up. It's going to put the edge of the garage at 14 to 15 feet. That's without the roof. So with the 412 pitch, we got a 21-foot in the air building. So I guess, I guess the bottom line is, why do we need that big of a garage with that tall of sides on an apartment that's only got 1,500 square feet if it's going to be used for personal use? I mean, I don't know why it can't all be nine-foot high. And if it's going to be used for commercial use, what's it going to say down the road? Or even if it's personal, what's it going to say down the road if he decides to sell it? Because he did it over on Grant Street. He built one and sold it to electrical company, a lighting company. And if he decides to sell this thing, you could have a repair shop in there. Or you could have anything in there with 11-foot-high doors. So there's really absolutely no reason why we need a 1,500-square-foot apartment with a 46 by 40. And you guys don't, can't imagine how high that is going to be until it gets constructed. Because I think the approval out here by Midlands Hospital quite a few years ago got halfway put up, then they stopped it. Well, I could go on and on, but Mark has got a house a block east of us that has got, he's got, well, I can tell you real quick. 346 East Third Street, he built a house of 1,300 square foot and a 749-square-foot garage underneath it. Then he built on a 960-square-foot detached garage. Then he went and he built on another 18 and a half by 40, 750 square foot. Then he attached them all together. So I guess the problem is, it's not Mark. But the problem is, is the city's letting people take a small building, and as long as the garage is connected to it, they can build as big as they want. And that's exactly what we got here. And Gabe Gottsy lives right across the street. He's going to have to look at a 40-foot by 12-foot-high building. My next-door neighbor, he's going to have to look at a 46-foot building. So I think the bottom line is, they better vote no. That's all I got to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other opponents? Yes. Again, if you, when you're at the podium, if you'd state your name for the record.
Gabe Gottsy, 303 North Jefferson. My thing kind of just rolls off of what Jack said. My only concern is the size of the garage doors. What are you going to be putting in there? And again, if it's sold, then what's going to happen? I mean, I have little kids, and there's enough garbage truck traffic in town. And I'm just worried for the future as far as, as big as it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R20-0109? Mr. Mumgarth.
I would make a motion to oppose this applicant.
Just, and it's just more of a Robert's Rule thing. I think generally our policy is to have affirmative motions, which would then be a motion to approve. And then if you wanted to vote against it, vote against it. But is it appropriate to have a substitute motion to oppose?
Motion to deny.
Is that an appropriate motion? Okay. So we, so that is an appropriate motion, so.
I'll phrase it correctly. I make a motion to deny the application.
So motion by Mumgarth, seconded by Ingberg. Council discussion, Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, you know, I, I saw the, is the applicant here at all? Could you come forward? I mean, I want to be fair to you. When I saw this on the Planning Commission agenda, I thought, my first thought was, good! Those, a garage for those apartments, that's a good enhancement of the neighborhood. And then when I saw what it was really for, I could only conclude that it is really not an enhancement of the apartments. As I understand it, the primary use of this is going to be to store some sort of construction equipment. Is that correct?
Not equipment, no. It'll be for storage, just for small tools. There'll be no dump trucks, no heavy equipment coming in and out of there.
Why is it so tall?
Just so that if I get shelves along the sides, I can.
Why do you have such huge garage doors in it?
Well, the two-car garage door is for the people that are going to live in the apartment.
Why are they so, why are they so tall? They're tall enough to put a truck through there.
Well, I have a trailer that I use, and it's difficult to, you know, take it off every day. I can back it in there, and it's out of sight, out of mind. Nobody can steal anything out of it.
Okay, well, I don't have any more questions. Thank you. I'll just continue my comments that, you know, this is clearly, as I see it, primarily for commercial use, equipment, storage, whatever. Nobody builds a garage that size for just cars. You know, if this was, if you wanted to build a duplex there, if you wanted to build a garage for the residents there, I would address it entirely different. But that's not what I'm seeing here. And this is something that just is never going to enhance this neighborhood. It'll be out of place. The residents' concerns about the future, I think, are very valid concerns. And so I just can't support it. Thank you.
Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've got a question. In the synopsis, in the last paragraph, it talks about the special use permit. And it specifically states that a special use permit is not required for the construction of a new residential garage within the downtown overlay district. So if we don't approve the special use permit, I guess the question would be for Mark, what size of garage would be allowed to be constructed at this location without the special use permit? Are we still looking at potentially the same size of a structure?
Mr. Sturzma.
At that location, because it's limited commercial zoning, there would be no restriction on the size of an accessory garage.
So that's part of the dilemma that I have, is that if we don't approve the special use permit, the potential is that the applicant could build something similar to what's shown on here, correct? And I also agree with Mr. Mumgarth is that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the size of the garage doors are way too high. I don't see a reason for building 11-foot-high garage door for somebody that's going to use small tools and things like that. The other question I have, Mark, is relative to the parking pad. Is it allowed to be that close to the east property line? I think it shows three foot or something to that effect.
Yeah, there's a, I think it's a three-foot setback requirement. The way that it's drawn, it doesn't look very feasible, but that drive, I'd assume that that'd have to be tweaked in reality.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the same concern, and I'll give you a little historical context. Prior to my time on the council, this goes back a long ways. Council gave approval to three garages that I'm aware of, four, now I think about it. One is visible from Alec Street. And it was initially built, if I remember, I was not on the council, but if I remember correctly, it was built with the idea of being a residential, use small tools kind of thing. And within a year, we started getting complaints about a person operating a business out of it. We have one on, as Miss Councilmember Sunday reminded me, on South Polk Street. There's a two-car garage, this huge, sitting right in the middle of a residential, between two residential houses. We have another one that was constructed similar in size that's now used to run a business out of. You know, I'm of the philosophy, if we're going to run a business, run it appropriately out of the proper place. And it's not necessarily you, Mark, because you may have the best intentions, but I worry about the size, and I worry about who comes after you. You know, if for some reason you move along or decide to sell property and so forth. You know, we really, really concerns me, it's that big. I'm like Councilmember Mumgarth, I thought of, when I first looked at it, I thought it was to add additional parking improvements for, you know, the apartments and stuff. And when it wasn't, then I was wondering exactly why it was there. So despite the fact that you could build it anyway, which is something I think maybe we need to look at, not, it's going to be too late, but for future, I'm still going to vote against it just on the principle of why it's being built or appears to be built, and the size of it. So like Mr. Meford said, you know, that size of doorways doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And the size of it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If all you want to do is store a few small tools and some equipment, I've got more tools I know what to do with, and I may depend on it in one car garage. So I'm going to vote against it, and you could do whatever you want to, I guess, according to the city planner. But I wish you'd reconsider it.
Mr. Gaines.
So I have a question for the applicant. Were you aware that you did not need a special use permit to build the garage?
Yes.
Okay. And how come you applied for it anyways?
I applied for it because the property would stay commercial.
Okay. So, real quick, Mark, with the property being commercial, he doesn't have to have any permit at all to build this garage. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is a tricky one from a zoning perspective, because it's zone commercial. The existing building was originally a hotel, and then it got converted to apartments a long time ago. It's in the downtown overlay district as well. So we have a residential use on a commercially zoned lot. And then the overlay district requires a special use permit for a residential use. It specifically exempts accessory buildings for residential use. So it just falls into this category where to build the apartment as part of this building, it needs a special use permit. And to build a parking pad, it needs a special use permit. The garage, if it's accessory to the residential use, does not need a special use permit.
Okay, so it's accurate then to say that if we turn this down tonight, tomorrow he could go and build this garage, or start pulling permits that he would need to build it?
That's correct. He could pull a building permit without needing to go through a special use permit process for just a garage.
Is it accurate that with a special use permit, that the city has more authority to control the way that he builds it?
So with the special use permit, you are allowed to place conditions on the permit.
Okay. And, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, that's it.
And all the conditions so far that it went through Planning Commission, and all the conditions that the city has placed on it so far, he's met. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is a motion to deny. Is that correct? So I would like to make a substitute motion to approve.
Second.
With a substitute motion to approve by Gaines, seconded by Sunday. Please vote on the putting the substitute motion on the floor. I think is the appropriate way to do it. So, Mr. Thielen. Just want to make sure we're following procedure.
Yeah, you can go ahead and take a vote on the motion to substitute.
So an affirmative vote will authorize the substitute motion. And I don't think that's a debatable motion, so it'll go straight to vote, correct?
Correct.
Please vote. So a yes will put the substitute motion. Is it a debatable motion?
Yeah, I'd recommend go ahead and entertain comments from the council members.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, so Mr. Gaines was kind of going down the track that I was looking at from the standpoint that there are conditions that were put on this, but are we as council members allowed to put conditions on to the size of the garage? So can we restrict from the standpoint of the floor plan size? Can we restrict from the standpoint of garage door height and things like that? Do we have the ability to put those types of conditions on?
Mr. Sturzma.
Yes, you do. You can approve it with conditions. Just as you can approve it with or without a renewal period for a special use permit, you can also approve it contingent upon conditions, and you can add conditions as part of your motion.
Okay. So I guess I'm looking from the standpoint of throwing out to the other council members relative to, because I support putting on the residential component. I don't have an issue with that. I support putting on a residential component. But I agree with some of the comments from the public, is that we're looking at a garage that's significantly greater than the residential component. And to me, a residential component is not 11-foot garage doors. It's not a 40 by 40 garage size either. And so my preference would be is to reduce the size of the garage significantly and also put in garage doors that would be more conducive with a residential-type component. So that's kind of what I'm throwing out there.
So the motion on the floor is to accept the substitute motion. Is there any other discussion on that point? Mr. Stube, your mic is still on. Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base too, because it says, in the event that this special use permit is not approved, a new garage would be allowed to be constructed. But the new garage is the normal size of a garage. Construction of a garage for civic, commercial, or industrial use would require a special use permit. So if we are going to allow this garage, he needs to understand it's going to be a three-car garage or nothing else. So I'm not going to, I have trouble supporting this too, because the thing's going to be huge. It's going to be an eyesore. And I think before we even vote yes, no, whatever, I think maybe if you really want to build this, you probably should redraw it, figure something else out, and come back.
Mr. Sunday.
The problem I'm having here is the city has zoned this commercial, as I understand it. Is that right, Mr. Sturzma?
The property is zoned limited commercial.
Limited commercial. So this property owner who pays taxes on that property and owns the property has certain expectations as a property owner. Is it fair for us to deny him the use that we've already zoned that property for? This city has. And there's other garages around town. I see them all the time. They're bigger than this one. 329 South Polk Street is probably 15 feet high off the ground. It's a double-car garage. The doors themselves are probably 12 feet. And it's right smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And I know you've all driven by there. So is it fair to this applicant? I don't know this applicant, but it doesn't seem like that it's fair to him to zone his property that way and then deny him and expect him to be, you know, strictly residential when the precedents have been set around town? That's all I have.
Thank you. And again, the discussion is on the motion that's on the floor. The motion on the floor is just, do we want to substitute?
When I first started going into the planning department, this is kind of what we came up with. And my second option was, if I'm not able to do this, I can just build a residential garage. And they told me that I could build up to a 9,000-square-foot residential garage on that property with a simple permit. So I would really like you guys to consider this, because I'm not saying I'm going to go out there and build a 9,000-square-foot garage, but I need 11-foot-high garage doors to back that trailer in. There'll be no outside storage or anything. So also, looking at the fourplex that's there, this roof height will not be as tall as that. It will be lower. And the only reason I need the 11-foot, like I say, is for that trailer to back it in there. So I don't have to disconnect it every night or leave it outside.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, okay, with regard to the substitute motion, I understand the concerns that by turning this down, we turn it back to him. And we lose any control over what he does. If he wants to, you know, I also understand that the commercial zoning there is an anachronism comes from the history. As was explained, it's commercial because that building at one point was a hotel. Now, you bought that building not as a hotel, not for a hotel, but for a residential use. So Mr. Sunday's comments have some fairness to it. But on the other hand, that's not what you have ever intended to use that property for. You've intended to use it for residential use. And now this comes in. Now, if we wanted to, you know, if we wanted to avoid the future problems and grant this permit with the conditions that the neighbors have outlined in this letter that's in front of you, with only a 1,200-square-foot apartment, just like you have, I'm all in favor of that. The garage limited to 960 square foot, just like the other garages in the area. The garage roof has the same roof line as the apartment. The gutter height is nine to 10 feet from the ground. And the garage door is no higher than nine feet. And that the garage cannot be rented out except to tenants. You know, if we wanted to put those conditions on, Mr. Gaines. You know, if we wanted to put those conditions on, Mr. Gaines, then your motion may make some sense. But to just grant it because we're afraid of what he will then go do, I think it's the wrong direction. That we don't completely abdicate our responsibilities because we're in this pickle because of the history of the property. We still use our responsibilities to protect the people who live around it. You bought that property with all those houses around it. So I don't think it's unfair for you now to have to use that property in a way that's consistent with the properties around it, regardless of that commercial zoning. So I can't vote for the substitute motion as it exists. If that substitute motion was amended to include these conditions that the neighbors have asked for, then that's a different picture.
Mr. Gaines.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is a substitute motion. So if the substitute motion's approved, then at that point, we can come back and make amendments to it if we choose and have council discussion on the substitute motion.
That is correct.
Because I feel like we're having... I want to have a discussion, but I feel like we're having discussion out of place, so.
Oh, just to reiterate, so the motion on the floor is to substitute for a denial. If that passes, now we've got the second, we will go into discussion on the motion to the denial. Amendments can be made to that motion then, which would be put the conditions on. Those stand or fail on their own, and then you vote on that. If the substitute motion fails, we're back to the original motion on the floor, which is the denial.
Right. And so even if we approve the motion to approve, the substitute motion, they still can vote no and turn this down and reject it.
That is correct. Mr. Sunday. Okay. Any other council discussion? Mr. Glover. Gaines, can you turn your microphone on, please?
Well, I thought it was on.
There it goes. It's on now.
I've been sitting here, thought I had leprosy or something like that.
Can you bring it down a little bit? Can you bring your microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
I, too, am against this building. And I'm not a builder, but when I see a 40 by 46 building that probably is going to end up about 20, anywhere from 20 to 21, 22 feet here, right next to the street that goes by, that is out of place. And to me, it's being grossly disrespectful to the landowners that own homes and have owned homes for years that live right around there. This is not a place for a huge warehouse building. There's a reason that you have subdivisions where you build homes and people retire there. And this is certainly not a place to put a building like that. And I'm going to vote against this motion. And I'm not opposed to what Mr. Stube said. If we can come to a consensus about what this building should look like and how big it should be, I'm not opposed to that. But under the current conditions, it makes no sense to me that, as elected officials, that we would put homeowners in this kind of a position.
Thank you. Mr. Gaines.
So the only way that we're going to be able to make any amendments is if we pass this motion to approve. So if we want to get to the next stage, again, I think we're having inappropriate discussion. If we want to make amendments, if somebody wants to put amendments on the floor, we have to approve this motion to approve. And then at that point in time, we can have council discussion and discuss why we are for it and why we're against it.
That is correct. Mr. Mumgarth.
You know, and I'm going to revise what I said earlier. To give Mr. Gaines a chance to come forward with proposals, I will vote for... I will vote to allow him to make the substitute motion.
Thank you. I don't see any other council discussion. And again, on the floor is the motion to deny. We have a substitute motion to approve, and the vote will authorize that motion. That becomes the motion on the floor. Please vote.
Six ayes, one nay by Jaworski.
So the motion passes. The motion on the floor now is a motion to approve. We are in council discussion, and we are free also to take amendments. Is that appropriate?
Yes. If the motion passes right now, as it's been stated, it would just be a flat approval without any conditions. If it's the intent of the council to attach some conditions to the approval, now's the time to make a motion to amend.
Correct. Mr. Stube.
Okay, so I'm just kind of doing in my head a count here, and I'm not sure that there's enough votes to support. And as a council member, my preference would be is if the applicant is willing to give considerations to some of the discussion relative to the size of the garage next to the apartment unit, that my preference would be is for us to table this and have the applicant go back, work with the planning department, and look at something that's reasonable for the applicant versus what he heard tonight and what some of the residents are saying. That would be my preference versus us as council members sitting here bantering back and forth relative to what we think and try to force something on you. My preference would be is to take that route.
Is that a preference for discussion or is that a motion?
That's for discussion.
Okay. Mr. Gaines.
So I would support tabling it also, but one of the points that I want to make that I'm struggling to understand, and I'm looking at, if all the council members can look at their map, you know, some of the other buildings that surround this are City Hall, the library, and, you know, 150 feet down the road, we have many other commercial buildings. We have daycares. We have a flower shop. We have brownies. All buildings that are large, commercial buildings. So I haven't... I'll support this as it stands because I support your right to do what you legally can do on the property that you legally own. I'll also entertain any amendments, and I would actually go along with Councilmember Stube. And I would recommend if there's things that you're willing to change on this, you know, maybe we... I'll be willing to make a motion to table it if that would be acceptable to you. And you could go back to the drawing board and make some changes. And maybe there can be some harmony between you and the neighbors on what your project is and what they're willing to look at. But as it sits, I don't see any reason to reject it. But I don't think it's a bad idea for you to go back to the drawing board and see if there's some changes because as it sits right now, I can tell you that it's not going to pass. I mean, that would be my... That's going to be my guess, you know? So, you know, if you'd like me to make a motion to continue it or to table it so that you can go back to the drawing board and maybe there's something that you can do that would appease your neighbors, I will make that motion for you.
Well, what they're asking is just, it's not going to work for me. I mean, a 9-foot garage door with a 10-foot-tall trailer? You know, it's just an enclosed trailer. I keep my mowers in.
Mr. Ingberg.
Well, I would agree with Mr. Stube. One thing I don't want to do is us to sit here as a body and try to decide how many square feet tonight, how high the doors are, and those kinds of issues. I'd rather have Mark go back and see, but I'm hearing now he's probably not going to do that. You know, I would like to work for the neighbors. As Mr. Sunday pointed out to me in the email recently, just because other councils in years past made... did something doesn't mean it shouldn't be taken. But in this case, he mentioned that we have these other garages. We shouldn't deny him. Well, those other ones shouldn't exist, but they do, that I cited earlier. And I just have a problem with that size of building. And I hope that you will be able to go back and give it some thought, and you're saying you can't, and revisit it. But this size, I don't know if you could... At this size, I don't know that you can gather enough support to pass it as is. And it's not about taking away property rights. It's a tip to try to negotiate something with someone that maybe was appropriate before, but maybe isn't quite fit the neighborhood now. And I just happen to think it's an opportunity to try and make something work. I don't want to take your property rights away, but I want you to... I would hope that you can at least kind of try to figure a way to make this palatable for you and your neighbors rather than just be sitting here and say, "Go ahead and build it, Mark. It's your property. Go ahead and build it." And everybody lives around you thoroughly upset because when they bought their property, they didn't expect to see that there, you know? So I'll support tabling it and at least give Mark the opportunity to give it some thought. And if he comes back and say, "Nope, it's my way of the highway," well, then we'll have to make a decision then.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, I'll pull the trigger, and I'll make a second substitute motion to lay this matter over for two weeks so that there can be further negotiations as to the details of the applicant.
I don't know if necessarily we need a substitute motion. I think it's just a motion to table.
It doesn't need to be a substitute motion. I think you could just make a motion to continue the case until the next meeting. And then when we come back for the next meeting, the pending motion's going to be on the table. We can take it up from there.
Yeah, so again, just to clarify then what I heard. So right now, we have the motion to approve on the floor. This will be a motion to table two weeks, which leaves this motion on the floor. So when we come back, we just pick up where we're at. So we have a motion by Councilmember Mumgarth, a second by Councilman Sunday.
I just want to mark a few downsides this a little bit, where it's not 22 feet high. If it's only 15 feet high, maybe them 11-foot doors won't look so bad. But when you got a monster building...
You know, I haven't calculated... Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I have calculated the height. I can do that real quick.
Well, all's worth saying is you're going to have to make this a little bit smaller. And if you do that, you might be able to still put your 11-foot doors in there. That's all I'm throwing out there. So the best thing is, let's table this.
Just to shrink the garage is what you're trying to say.
Well, maybe the height. Why are we so high?
And what will happen is the motion to table, if it passes, just kind of stops the discussion for tonight. By two weeks then, you have the... Mr. Sturzma's heard the council discussion. He's heard the public input. That gives you two weeks to visit with him. And then whatever the outcome of that discussion is at the next council meeting, that comes forward, and then we just pick up where we're at.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to table for two weeks. Please vote.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes. So basically, what we've done is just hit pause. And so Mr. Sturzma understands the discussion that's occurred. He's heard the public input. I think he knows about trying to figure out where the council's at. No vote taken, so we're not... We don't know where they would land, but knows the discussion. And so this is just two weeks for you and Mr. Sturzma then to visit and then figure out what do we bring back to the next meeting. And then again, at the next meeting, we'll just kind of pick up exactly where we just left off. On a motion to approve.
Okay.
So, thank you.
If he doesn't have the time to give it two weeks, he can always lay it over a little longer, can't he?
Mr.... So the motion is to bring it back in two weeks, but if that needs to change, Mr. Sturzma has the ability to work through that with staff. So, thank you. Item F3, Resolution R200118. A resolution to prove a permanent easement granted to Metropolitan Utilities District of Omaha at 132nd Street and Highway 370 for water pipelines. Is there a motion to prove Resolution R200118? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes. All the regular agenda items. The F and A committee did meet tonight. Any report out from that, Mr. Gaines?
Just real quick, don't we need to vote on this motion to table?
We did.
For this item? Did we? I don't think we voted, did we?
Didn't we? Yeah, we did. It passed. Any report from the F and A committee, Mr. Ingberg?
Yes, Mayor. F and A committee met prior to the council meeting tonight. We had two items on our agenda, field guidelines for use of fields and also recreation user fees. As far as recreation user fees are concerned, we'd recommend that it go forward as presented to us. There was a lot of basic cleanup fees and some adjustments due to COVID, some adjustments done because as we opened up the landing and are doing new things, we're able to have a better feel for what the actual need is as far as user fees and whether the punch cards work or don't work in certain areas. And so those adjustments are in there, and we're going to bring that forward as is. As far as the field guidelines, everybody will remember that in the past, we had some difficulty with block scheduling of... Best way I could put it, block scheduling of fields and then finding out that though a field may have been scheduled Monday through Friday by a particular team or organization, we'd find on Tuesday and Wednesday, nobody was using it. It just sat there empty. And we could have allowed that to be used by other entities instead of just sitting there empty. So the staff and Laura Hansen and Tim Moran and so forth came up with a way to perhaps hold everybody a little more accountable for that in the form of perhaps a fee. It's really a pretty minor fee. But what we ask and encourage them to do and direct them to do before we bring that portion forward is to go back and look at some other methods of increasing that accountability, either in addition to or in substitution of a fee for non-use that was scheduled. And it might include a penalty disorganization. There's other options. But it's going to be a little more creative, and we thought it needed a little bit more teeth to it. Most of that is not going to take place. We're going to vote on this as a council before fall. But my understanding is at least the field guidelines will probably not go into effect until we get past the COVID situation because it's going to be really difficult for people as is. And we don't want to penalize, say, a league or an individual team if all of a sudden one of their members, the day before they're supposed to use it, or two members come down with COVID and they can't practice or they can't play a game or whatever because of that. So we'll actually vote on both before the fall. But the field guidelines, even if they're approved, the majority won't really go into effect till after the pandemic is run its course, so to speak.
Thank you very much. I think that's the only committee that met. We have any comments from the floor? See, not any council comments. Mr. Ingberg, do you still have another one? Okay. Any other council comments? All right. Just a couple of reminders. Public Safety Committee is going to have a meeting before the next city council meeting. And then we did get an update on the Vietnam Veterans Project. I think you saw an article in the paper a few weeks ago about that project. They're kind of moving into a fundraising. And they've started to put together some more committees. And it seems like their momentum's picking up, and Bellevue University is doing some things in the partnership as well. But you've got a copy of an email with that update, so you start probably hearing more and more about that. We're working on a memo of understanding with that organization just so we can have real clear expectations of what it is, and that will become before the council. So you'll have an ability, probably sooner than later, to approve the concept and what the expectations are. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. Please vote.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
We are adjourned. Thank you.